Good morning. This virtual public hearing conducted by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime Transportation, Power and Energy Utilities, and Emergency Response is now called to order at 9:04 a.m. Notice of the hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on June 24th of 2020 with the second notice provided on June 29th of 2020. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. The committee will hear testimony on Bill 306-35COR, an act to amend Sections 63118 and 63122 of Article 1, Chapter 63, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, to add a new Section 62104.1.1 to Article 1, Chapter 62, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Sections 11320 and 11321 of Chapter 11, Title IX, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to lifting restrictions preventing the control of the feral pig population and restricting the release of pigs. That measure has been introduced by myself. We'll also hear testimony on Bill Number 285-35COR, an act to amend Sections 77302A of Article 3, Chapter 77, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new Section 34126 to Article 1, Chapter 34, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new Section 602 to Article 2, Chapter 60, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, and to repeal and reenact Section 70.10.3, Article 1, Chapter 70, Title IX, Guam Code Annotated, as Section 34127 of Article 1, Chapter 34, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing volunteers to enforce animal abuse laws introduced by Senator Luis Munia. Now, before we begin, I'd like to go over some housekeeping rules for this virtual public hearing. So I'll start first by providing the panel participants with some general rules of conduct for the public hearing. All participants must abide by the rules of conduct and quality assurance standards, including broadcasting from a quiet room with little to no interruptions, broadcasting from a room with adequate lighting specifically to ensure the participants' face is visible and not backlit, and ensuring that the participants' face is visible at all times while speaking. Please ensure that you are unmuted and that you are speaking clearly into your microphone. The chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify, and individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name and title for record purposes, the order of questioning. The group settings where more than one individual is present, please state your name before providing comment. We'll begin with the panel of senators, who shall complete their lines of questioning for each respective item on the agenda. Each member will be allowed to pose one question to an individual testifying for one round and be provided another round if necessary. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature. I'd like to welcome all of my colleagues joining us today. Senator Luis Munia, Senator Mary Torres, Senator Kelly Marsh Titano, Senator Telo Titigui. Thank you all for joining us this morning. And I'd like to begin first with Senator Luis Munia and allow her the opportunity to speak on her measure, Bill 285-35COR. Senator Munia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna go ahead, and I know you read the title of the bill already, but I'd like to go ahead and start with that, if that's okay. So this is Bill Number 285-35COR, an act to amend subsection 77302A of Article 3, Chapter 77, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new subsection 34126 to Article 1, Chapter 34, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new subsection 6205 to Article 2, Chapter 60, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, and to repeal and reenact subsection 70.10.3, Article 1, Chapter 70, Title IX, Guam Code Annotated, as subsection 34127 of Article 1, Chapter 34, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing volunteers to enforce animal abuse laws. Mr. Chairman, Bill Number 285-35, if enacted, will allow GPD's Cape Volunteers to issue citations for animal abuse violations. The bill also creates a volunteer animal control officer program at the Guam Department of Agriculture. This new program is called the PAWS Volunteer Program, and PAWS is an acronym for Protecting Animal Welfare and Safety. Volunteer programs are an important part of public safety in the United States. Although this animal control program will be new to Guam, it's fairly common throughout the rest of the country. There are literally hundreds of animal rights advocates on Guam, and notably Guam Animals in Need, also known as GAIN. I'm certain that there will be no shortage of volunteers for this program, Mr. Chair. Since volunteers work uncompensated for their service for this program, it should cost very little in taxpayers' funds. I look forward to comments and suggestions on the bill to strengthen it, and I look forward to the testimony for today's hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Munia. So I'd like to begin first, let's begin first with the Department of Agriculture. Mr. Adrian Cruz, does the Department of Agriculture have testimony on this bill?
Yes, we do. Good morning, senators. We at the Department of Agriculture are in agreement that this would be a great program to help out our needs. As you know, we are a chronically underfunded agency, and we always have issues with personnel and being able to hire that. And so this would be a great help to us. Of course, whatever volunteer organization, whether GAIN now or whatever pops up in the future or another nonprofit, we'll have to worry about the training of these kind of volunteers, but that's something that us and the nonprofit will iron out and deal with. But yes, we support this bill. It is sorely needed. We only have so many animal control officers, and if you only knew the amount of calls that we get, our capacity at GAIN is also limited, so it's very difficult for us even when we do have complaints or when we have to take dogs. It's always an issue. And so being able to have volunteers to help us identify problems before they become bigger problems, give out citations and warnings, and being able just to help educate the public on how to better care for or what are the laws on Guam that pertain to their pets, will actually probably decrease the need to be able to seize dogs and have to bring them to GAIN, which of course has issues all on its own. So yes, we do support it.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Cruz, for that testimony. All right, and now I'd like to allow for the members of Guam Animals in Need to testify. I'll begin first with Mr. Cyrus Lour. If you may begin by introducing yourself.
Thank you, Senator and Chairman. My name is Cyrus Lour. I'm the president of the Board of Directors of GAIN. In the interest of transparency, I do work in the legislature for Senator Sabina Perez, but right now my testimony is being given fully in my capacity as the president of the Board of GAIN. Joining me today is Allison Hadley. I'll be providing our testimony, but she is our executive director at the animal shelter and can provide any sort of logistical or in-depth questions anybody may have regarding our numbers or processes. We are fully in support of this legislation. We think it's very forward-thinking and progressive and solutions-oriented, so we strongly thank the author for introducing this bill, and we fully support it. Currently in Guam, what I want to do is very briefly discuss the demand or the need for this bill, the precedent for legislations such as this or programs such as this, and then lastly, the regulatory and safety impacts that this bill will have. In the late 60s, Guam had about under 3,000 dogs total, both stray and owned. This is an estimate that was done by the Department of Defense. In the mid 90s, Guam had over 20 animal control officers, and the Department of Agriculture at the time estimated that the total dog population in Guam was about 20,000. In 2014, Humane Society International did a survey in collaboration with GAIN of the dog population in Guam and estimated that the number is now 60,000. At the time and currently, Guam has four animal control officers. So we're seeing a drastic drop in the number of animal control officers for Guam and an increasing number of stray dogs and dogs in total. We had a veterinarian with the Department of Defense who has a background in statistics, and she estimated that since 2014, the number of total dogs in Guam has increased by 5%. The number is increasing, and right now we do not have the manpower in government to be able to address this problem. In this vacuum in which we're not having enough animal control officers, not only are we seeing incidences of abuse going unaddressed that the public finds concerning, we're seeing just the stray dog problem becoming a problem. And so, and this is not only a humane issue with animals. We don't want to allow animals to suffer out there, but it's also a public health issue. The potential for zoonotic diseases to spread is real. The impact that animals have on, in terms of bites or just being aggressive is real, and it's something that the mayors are very frustrated with as well. It's very frustrating right now to have to, when mayors are capturing animals and then having to release them because there's no space to place them or there's no ability to transport them from a mayor's office up to the shelter. And so what we're seeing is just a vacuum in which there really should be a government service. I mean, animal control is a government function, and I have yet to find any place, any jurisdiction in the states that isn't, that doesn't have 24-hour animal control program in place. But in Guam, because we only have four animal control officers and because one of them is detailed fully, 40 hours a week into an office to answer phones because there's no, you know, animal control, proper animal control, there's no animal control line or funding for that, for that function, we essentially have a very limited animal control program that stops at 5 o'clock on Friday and restarts the Monday at 8 o'clock. And we know that animal control and the stray dog problem and animal abuse is not a 9 to 5 or 8 to 5 problem. It is around the clock. And we have constantly, we're constantly receiving calls from the public, from mayors, from people in which they don't know what to do. An animal gets hit by a car at 6 o'clock on Friday. We've actually, literally, an example like this, when an animal's hit by a car at 6 o'clock on Friday, what are they supposed to do if the animal's not dead but laying in their yard? In the past, when somebody has called GPD, they've been told, wait for it to die. And so what happens? A day or two goes by, finally Monday morning rolls around, and this has happened, where a dog was dying, couldn't move, but it was dying in somebody's front yard, and they just had to wait for it to die. This is unacceptable. And what we're finding in this vacuum in which government has failed over the decades to provide this service is that people are resorting to Facebook groups and trying to help each other out, and they're not, they don't have no training, they have no regulations to follow, and they are not provided any sort of tools or training to get this job done. We are exceptionally thankful for all these different groups, these community individuals who are stepping up to do this work, but they're not being provided the structure, the liability protection, or the guidance to be able to execute these, to be able to do their job. Now, I want to move, that's the demand side. In terms of precedent, there is precedent for this. Nationwide, there are many volunteer animal control officer programs in which proper training, guidance, and regulatory functions or regulatory structure are provided to trainees. And in Guam, we also have similar programs. GPD has the Officer Reserve program, the Civilian Volunteer Police Reserve. They also have the Community Assisted Policing Effort, the CAPE program. So it's the leafs that you see driving around in which they can ticket people for having out-of-date license plates and such. Guam Homeland Security has the Community Emergency Response Team, the CERT program, which they are authorized to be able to train people to do fire suppression. And the Department of Agriculture itself has the Volunteer Conservation Officer Program. So we think that taking this approach is not only, you know, has strong precedent in the states, but even has legal precedent in Guam itself. And so it just makes sense that if we have this vacuum, this underserving that the government's providing, and we have community members that are willing to step up and do this, why can we not bridge that gap and at least be able to provide some sort of structure, some sort of training for the community to be able to assist the Department of Agriculture in these tasks? What would a program like this look like? We would not anticipate, we would not expect volunteers to go out there and start breaking up dog fighting rings. 90, 95% of our calls are stray dogs, injured dogs, somewhat aggressive dogs, and, you know, your abuse cases in which it's more, can be intervened using education rather than the legal system. And so oftentimes, it's a dog is chained up, but it's not being provided with water or proper shelter, and that's something that many volunteers will go out there and simply talk to somebody in a constructive manner, and that usually gets addressed without the animal having to be removed. Right now, animal control officers have to do that function, and so they're not able to do the more in-depth cruelty cases, investigations that they're trained to do because they have to go out and pick up an animal that a mayor's office has captured, or pick up a stray dog that somebody, that's harassing somebody's chickens. That's something that can be done by volunteers. And GAIN, in its, we work closely with Humane Society U.S., and they've offered to provide training. If we did have a program like this, that they would be able to send folks out here to provide training to local volunteers and even animal control officers to be able to do onsite consultations, issuing tickets, and things of that nature. And lastly, that kind of brings me to the safety and regulatory aspect. I think there is a concern, a valid concern, that we don't want to get to the point where we're just sort of have vigilante justice, where we just authorize dozens of people to go out there to be able to issue citations without any sort of regulatory oversight. And we completely agree with that. We want a program that is fully under the authority of the Department of Agriculture. If there's language within the bill that would authorize partnerships with a local nonprofit, and that's where we see GAIN's role coming in and be able to provide training, assistance. Ultimately, we need a 24-hour phone line when it comes to animal control. It can't be the situation where it stops at 5 o'clock on Friday and then you just got to wait till Monday. That is, that is a government failure. We need a 24-hour line, and something like that could be manned by a third party, sort of like how Varo does that for domestic violence responses. Obviously, we would need funding for that sort of program, but that's something we can discuss, you know, further in the budgetary process, but, you know, those are long-term goals. But the reason why we really need legislation like this is that in this vacuum that we currently have, the public is already going out there onto private property to rescue dogs, to confront people, because there's nowhere for them to turn. And so we are putting the public in a dangerous situation where they're trying to respond to situations that need to be addressed immediately. You can't allow these things to, you know, to last three, four days and an individual or an animal gets harmed. But when we don't have a 24-hour line and we don't have volunteer animal control officers, we're basically leaving the public to confront each other with no regulatory oversight, no training, and that can lead to dangerous situations. And we have seen ourselves, just in animal welfare community, risky situations in which people are confronting each other, in which people are trying to take an animal improperly from a private property, or people are disagreeing about how an animal should be, at which point there should be intervention or not. And that's because there's no regulatory guidance. But if there are volunteer animal control officers, this allows a structure to be in place to prevent the public from feeling as if they have to resort to confronting somebody and then it escalating to potentially violence or, you know, breaking the law in other manners. And so this bill really serves two purposes. It not only authorizes volunteers to be able to take on certain functions in a volunteer capacity in which there's precedent, to be able to issue citations and such, but it also helps regulate it on the other end. It eliminates the impulse or eliminates the free-for-all that we currently have, and that will continue. As long as this bill doesn't exist, as long as we don't have this structure in place, people will continue to be going onto private property and confronting each other, and people in the community will continue to be put into dangerous positions. By having a volunteer animal control officer program, we'll be able to provide structure, regulatory oversight, and be able to prevent the free-for-all that we're currently seeing. And so this is something that I think the animal welfare community has been looking for, the ability to get training, to have regulatory structure, to be able to do the things that currently are not being done or are being underfunded, and it's something that I think is sorely needed. In terms of the structure of the bill and in terms of its adoption to law, we are open as GAIN into whatever approach that the committee and the body would support. We certainly would be open to, I think our main goals, our main purposes are that it remains under the Department of Agriculture's oversight, that there be a structure in place to provide liability protections for both volunteers and for the government, and that there be very clear sort of guidelines for how the Department of Agriculture would be able to provide both a training through the third party, but also just the structure to be able to authorize people to issue citations, but also to remove that authorization. So ultimately, we want the Department of Agriculture to have final say in who's able to issue citations and in what capacity. Yeah, so that kind of wraps up our vision and our support for this bill. Again, thank Senator Munia for coming up with this idea and introducing it. We think it is a great idea that works in many places around the country. There's already precedent in Guam for doing something like this, and it's sorely needed because without this bill, we are right now seeing the public confront each other in very dangerous and unhealthy ways. And with this bill in place, we'll finally have a volunteer animal control program that can respond to these issues after hours.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Lour. I'd like to afford that opportunity now to Allison Hadley from GAIN, if she has any comments or testimony on the measure.
Sure. Hi. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Allison Hadley. I'm the executive director for GAIN. I'll just briefly say that, you know, I, obviously, I reiterate everything that Mr. Lour has to say about this. I am in support of all of this. I am just, my major focus is definitely that the training on the animal laws on Guam and stuff are, you know, a huge focus, just so there isn't sort of that, I guess, vigilante attitude going into it. A lot of people who currently do a lot of the rescuing on island, you know, they are rightfully so, very impassioned people, and they want to do what's right, and we absolutely support that, but we want it to be done safely and within the guidelines of the law and, you know, to go through the proper steps that are necessary if we want to properly, you know, remove an animal from a bad situation and that sort of thing. But I definitely think that this is something that Guam needs, and I think it has definitely the opportunity to be something great and extremely helpful to both GAIN and animal control and the community as a whole. So, you know, definitely we're in support of all that. Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'd now like to allow the opportunity for my colleagues to ask some questions, the members of the panel, beginning first with Senator Kelly Marsh Titano.
Hi, my name is Sizouz Maasie, everybody here, and the author of this bill as well. And thank you for accommodating me early. I may have to leave early for a meeting, but I am hoping to be here for 3:06 as well. And so it was really important to hear the testimony from the Department of Agriculture, who would have a role here, and especially from both Cyrus and Allison, because they have been intimately involved for many years, and to hear their perspective from their experiences is so important. It's something they're definitely deeply committed to, and they would only want to see the right thing done. So some of the testimony about the models in the states and just how extreme our situation is here, where we have that estimated 60,000 animals, and I can see that that number is probably a pretty realistic one. Can't drive down a road anywhere without running into a pet or a stray. So, and then the fact that we have gone from 20 animal officers down to four. You know, I think it's sometimes we want, well, all the time, we want the government to be accountable, we want it to be as streamlined as possible, we want it to be as fiscally responsible as possible, but at sometimes, less is not more. For, for where there used to be 20, sometimes it just has to be more is more to satisfy our community, and I think the author for being creative in this, where the fiscal impact would be minimal. So there were some, again, concerns, but concerns so that we can address them and make this stronger so that it's meeting its full intent. One of them, I wanted to ask perhaps both Cyrus and Allison, the Department of Agriculture, but just to strengthen the bill, I think perhaps that language of may having training and education for the volunteers, I'd like to get your perspective. Would you support a show just to verify that there is training and education for these volunteers for their safety, for the liability issues, and then for the safety of the animals as well? Does that make sense to you? Maybe if I would start with the Department of Agriculture and then hear for the GAIN volunteers as well?
Sure. We obviously would want some kind of training, especially if we're going to give volunteers the legal authority to be able to issue citations and things like that. As most people know, that could turn into a dangerous situation. So yes, we would want training, at least on our end, if we're going to be giving out, we're basically deputizing them, we would give them training, and we would like to continue to reserve the powers to mandate what that means, what that looks like. So yeah, that's where we stand.
Sizouz Maasie for that. And if I could hear from Cyrus as well?
I think that's an excellent point, and we would absolutely support that as well. We do have folks on Guam that are former animal control officers from programs in the states. They moved back to Guam, and they have that skill set, and they want to get involved. But even in those cases, when we've spoken with them, they've talked about how they would want training or to understand how citation issuances are conducted in Guam and what the rules are for Guam, what are the rules for going onto private property and such. We want to make sure that everybody's doing things safely, whereas right now, we're leaving these very dedicated and very, you know, well, you know, passionate volunteers without any of those guidance, those structures or training. So we absolutely would support an amendment like that.
And just for fairness and going around, Allison, you know, I don't want to leave you out. Do you concur as well?
Yeah, I guess, yes, I do.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I'm sure that that's the intent of the author, is she wants everything to be as safe as possible and it properly in place as possible. So I wanted to tackle that. And the other concern I had, and maybe, again, maybe Cyrus, since it seems like you've done a lot of research in this area, if you could weigh in on how they handle it in the states, the entry.
Senator Kelly, if we can, Senator Kelly, we can come back to it with a second round on that.
Oh, is it gonna be one question each?
Yeah, we can come back to it on the second round. And also, I'd like to let Senator Titigui, I understand Senator Titigui has a question. And also, I'd like to let Senator Titigui, I understand Senator Titigui has a question, and I understand she's has something, another thing that she has to participate in shortly. So I'd like to allow Senator Titigui.
Okay, yeah, I'll I'll wait for the second round on that.
Thank you. Senator Telo Titigui.
Sijous Mossi, Mr. Chair, and thank you for accommodating me. I really apologize. I I wanted to make sure I was on both, and I'm going to try and come back as soon as I can. But again, Adrian Cruz, thank you so much. It's so good to see you. I know you've been really super busy, and being in support of this bill is is important. And Cyrus, as well as Allison, I appreciate all the work that you're doing at Gain. Got a lot of help from the community. And just like the author had mentioned, there's not going to be any shortage of volunteers. I'm pretty sure of that. My only concern right now, and the question to you, Cyrus would be, and Allison, would be the facility itself where Gain is located and and placing these these dogs in need to stay there. I know that the the facility is full a lot of times. And if if we have volunteers out there picking up, you know, stray dogs or dogs in need abused in in any way, the place is full. I mean, I do you guys plan on extending the facility? If I'm not mistaken, I don't think you pay for rent. Is that true, Cyrus? You don't pay for rent? And then I think utilities is covered under Adrian, is it covered under Department of? Okay, so whatever funding you get, I know there's a lot of expenses in what you're doing. But is there any plans to expand it? Do you have an issue right now where it's full? And when dogs are brought to to your animals are brought to you that you can't house them because you're full? Can you give me a little bit of insight on that?
Thank you, Senator. That's an excellent point. And yes, you've you've absolutely hit one of the major issues that we we struggle with right on the head. We have been working very closely with Department of Agriculture, so we really do thank them for for their support. We've we've put in an application for a large Department DOI grant that would be able to expand our facility. We think that we can essentially double our capacity with about $125,000, $150,000 construction project. And so that's what we're hoping to be able to secure through this grant. If that doesn't come through, obviously, we'd be advocating for GovGuam to be able to to do that because this is, you know, it's it's a chronically overtaxed infrastructure that we have there. The facilities are quite literally 51 years old. They were built in in 1969. And they really haven't, you know, have been left. Our we're struggling with with not only the the space, but the infrastructure up there as well, the water, the the septic system. Forty to 50% of our quarantine capacity right now is out of our capacity in the quarantine area, which is where all animals come in initially from the mayor's offices and such, is is out of commission because the fencing, the actual kennels themselves are rusted and just cannot be used. Animals can actually escape from them. So we would be able to effectively double our capacity in to be able to handle intakes with about $30,000 to $40,000 worth of repairs. Currently, the the way our contract is written, the facilities, the operations of the facilities is subcontracted out to us as a private entity. But the facilities themselves belong to the government of Guam, and maintenance and repairs are supposed to be covered by the government of Guam. So if we could secure that that money in this budget cycle, we'd be able to double our capacity in the in in terms of in to in space for intakes in a very short period of time without even the DOI grant. That's something that we will advocate for in this budget cycle. We hope that we would have your support because that would go a long ways to to being being able to assist with with responding to the mayors, the animal control, Department Ag, and the public.
So Cyrus, right now, you're having a difficult time receiving any animals because you're full? Is is that what you're saying?
We we almost always run at near capacity. It's it's just the reality of of the situation in Guam. And so we try to regulate intakes as much as we can. So when people reach out to us, we work with them. And, you know, many, we we have about, we take in about six, well over 6,000 animals a year. About 90% are brought in by the public, about, you know, 10% are brought in by animal control. And so when people call us to try to bring in an animal, we usually work with them to see, is this an immediate case? Or could they wait a couple of weeks? Or could we redirect the animal into foster care? Many times, many, many times, animals injured, it's been hit by a car, but it's still alive. And so many of those cases, those intakes are just euthanized immediately. But if the animal is healthy and adoptable, they'll stay with us for for quite some time before they get adopted. And so it's this very delicate, very difficult balancing act. But if we were to have, first of all, if we were to have voluntary animal control officers, that would help regulate our intake significantly. Because sometimes people would just drop off an animal when it could, the intervention could have been have, could have been done out in the field, and a alternative solution, a better solution could have been found, where an educational intervention would have been able to allow the animal to stay with the family without it having to be being brought in. So.
Okay, but can I? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Cyrus. No, I pretty much, yeah, and and I wish you luck. And I hope that, you know, as far as like, if there's no government money, that you would actually seek some fundraisers. You guys do some great fundraisers, maybe to raise some money to to build a bigger facility. But before I go, I just wanted to hear from Department of Agriculture, their perspective on, do you guys have an issue when you're you're bringing animals to the facilities that they can't be placed there because it's too full? Or anything like that that you can add in, Adrian?
Sure. So Gain is a government-run facility. And it it is frustrating at times because the reality is there's a lot of dogs on Guam. That that's that's the bottom line. And and the facility is, I don't know, Cyrus, how old is that facility? Maybe 40 years old or so? Yeah. And and so it's an aged facility. There's limited space. I know that there was a bunch of kennels that were removed for like a dog park area, a socialization area. So, you know, we only have that lot that we deal with. There's only so much that we can do on it. We're chronically, because the infrastructure is so old. I'll give you an example. Over the weekend, the septic backed up. And so that that that's an issue. We've had water leaks. We, there's a lot of problems with the facility itself. And we just don't have the space. And so when we don't have the space, when the animal control officers are called out to respond to a call, we kind of have one hand tied behind our back because there's nowhere to put the dog, even if we even if we pick it up. So it's just this vicious cycle that that keeps going on. And it really hampers our ability to be able to perform our job. And so if there is a solution or a way to try to keep the animal out of the shelter to begin with, I think that that that's a start of of what we're going to do. And and maybe the other thing is have a more solid agreement or plan on how long we're going to hold the animals. Because obviously, space is always going to be the issue.
Oh, okay, how long you hold them? Okay, Mr. Chair, I have to go, and I greatly appreciate the opportunity. And I think, Allison, thank you for being here to testify too as well with Gain. It's good to see you. Cyrus and Adrian, I appreciate your testimony. And I will be reviewing the the tape to see any other things that I've missed. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity, and thank you to the author of the bill.
Absolutely. Thank you, Senator Titigui. Now, I'd like to move on to Senator Mary Torres. Any questions or comments for the panel?
Yes. Cyrus, Allison, and Adrian, thank you very much for that very thorough briefing. I was very curious to understand not only the what this bill intended, but the precedent that was that has been set across the country as well. But I, what was particularly important to me was learning about, you know, the the nuances of the structure, the the guidance and training that's required and the regulatory protections. But the question that I do have is, in looking at the bill, and maybe Adrian, this is where you can you can chime in. Would we also be required, or is it advisable, that we that we develop as part of this new authority, the rules and regulations to guide it? So, you know, in in many instances, you're required to promulgate rules and regulations through the AAA process that then becomes part of the Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, so that it's it's, you know, it's clear what the parameters are of the program. And that was the one thing in listening to to your briefing about this initiative. That was the one thing that stuck out is how do we go the the next step to ensure that everybody's clear about what that structure is? Because I'm I'm very concerned about, you know, we have a climate right now where home invasion is prevalent, where there is a lot of calling out for greater standard ground authority. And and so this idea that somebody can, you know, a citizen volunteer can now be given authority to do things, it it kind of scares me because the climate right now is just, you said, the vigilante, the, you know. So if you can opine about rules and regulations through the GAR, whether it should be factored in here?
So the way I envisioned, and I'm open to expanding that, but was that we already have, animal control officers already have rules and processes and authority to do such things. And so my vision was that this was going to be a deputization of a volunteer. So basically, whatever rules and processes that animal control officers have to go through, they're basically going to have the same training, along with the same scrutiny as to who gets to be a volunteer. You know, just because a person works at Gain and just because they want to volunteer doesn't automatically mean that I'm going to accept that. They will also have to go through their own screening process and have have to have some safeguards put in to hold them accountable. As the rule also states, the department also has the authority to revoke that. And so I I agree with you, Senator, that this can be a dangerous situation, right? You're dealing with somebody's, not just somebody's property, but somebody's pet. And it's, you know, if if somebody, it's no different than I think people who are social workers who have to go in for a child neglect, right? It it becomes very sensitive. It becomes very heated. And and you're dealing with somebody's family. Well, in a lot of cases, people regard their pets as family, and so this can this can turn really ugly. I totally agree with you. And I, from the departmental side, we will be very stringent as to who we allow and the parameters that they are able to operate. We prefer that the volunteers basically do the the first steps, which is to identify problem areas or problem households and really leave the actual dealing with the owner to the animal control officers. So that's how that's how I envisioned this program to work, is leave leave the leave the more dangerous things to the animal control officers. And that will really free us up as well. We only have four animal control officers. And so if we had people that are able to address stray dogs on the street or dogs that got hit, things like that, that would really free up our time to be able to have to deal with real problem cases in which, you know, you would have to go into issue citations and things like that. But yes, I am I am open to making rules that that would kick into GAR. But we have our own, and and the way that we were going to do it was basically to deputize them under our own existing statute.
I see. Cyrus, you had a.
I believe Mr. Lur has, yeah, please.
Thank you. And and Senator, thank you for that 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 point. And and I I think it's an excellent point. When it comes to 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 the AAA process, my my only fear with the process itself, with with putting everything in into GAR, is that ultimately, the what we want in the animal welfare community and just personally is Gain for for this bill is to see full authority to be with with Department Agriculture. And if we put it, put specific steps and procedures in GAR, it eliminates the responsive, the the agent, the department's ability to 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 adjust their their protocols should something, you know, a a new process or a new point come come up in the future, and they realize that they need to adjust. The AAA process, of course, can take 18 months or more sometimes. It it can fail pretty easily. It can get forgotten sometimes because it's not a high priority. And so we want to, we want the agent, the department, to be able to have as fast a response time in terms of adjusting its procedures if it needs to. And currently, the Officer Reservist Program and the Animal Control, Voluntary Animal Control Officer Program don't do not have extensive protocols in GAR. They they have it under the agency itself. And so we would recommend that same sort of responsiveness and full oversight to 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 be under the department as well.
Okay, no, that's fair enough, and I and I'm glad that we cleared that up. You know, I I'm old enough to remember the days when there were adequate numbers of animal control officers on the streets, where people who had pets were were forced. Because Guam, when I was growing up, was not rabies-free. So we were required to vaccinate our pets and to have tags on them that, you know, confirm that they were vaccinated. So there was a time when Guam really had things under control. And, you know, I I witnessed that, and I was a part of that. And our animals were either kept on a leash or within proximity of our yards. And or if they roamed, they were properly identified. And so, you know, there we do need to get back to those days where citizen responsibility was the order of the day. And I think that has gone to the wayside. But no, I I really appreciate this briefing. I think that it was important to understand exactly what was intended, and I I totally respect it. You know, I'm totally behind it. And as long as we can, you know, know that people have parameters and they're not, it's not a free for all, then then, you know, it's it's sound. And thank you very much. I just want to make that comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Munia.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Cyrus a just a quick question about the the cost of spaying and neutering animals. Does that come out of Gain's budget as well too? Or? I I'm just thinking because, you know, part of the process of education is making sure that we 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 decrease the population of our strays. And, you know, that that's another another avenue, I know. But, you know, I think people want to know what, you know, how to go about spaying and neutering. And and if Gain receives an animal, where does that cost come from as well?
When for our adopted animals, the spaying and neutering is covered by the adoption fee. And that's a a fee that's been negotiated with local veterinarians. So we're very thankful that they've reduced it for us, and that's that's how we're able to accomplish that. We do a number of fundraisers, and we've applied for grants in order to provide additional spay-neuter services. But those are severely limited. And in the last five, six months, it's been obviously placed on hold. And one of our volunteer veterinarians has moved off island, and so it's it's that constant struggle. But we do, we are thankful for the department helping us. We've our Department of Interior grant is fully focused on animal, reducing the number of stray dogs in Guam. And that, of course, is focused primarily on spaying and neutering. We will not be able to kill our way out of this problem. When you simply eliminate and kill animals, you create this vacuum effect, and you actually end up increasing animals. Because instead of having one old dog that's consuming the resources in an area, you have a number of puppies. And so places that have tried to kill their way out of a stray dog problem have seen the numbers go up, which is why we need to spay and neuter, release, and then have those numbers drop naturally over time. So that's what we're trying to do with our Department Interior Grant. Fingers crossed that comes through. If it does not, then we're going to have to try to find some other ways. But we thank the community for donating so much to our volunteer efforts when it comes to spaying and neutering. And you're right, this is this is part of the problem. And voluntary animal control officers, animal control officers as they are right now are basically overtaxed because they have to deal, contend with the stray animal problem in Guam.
Hey, thank you very much, Cyrus, for just opening up the eyes to the the general public and even to our colleagues about the the situation with our stray animal problem. Mr. Chair, I'll just reserve for my closing, and we can offer the opportunity to the to the other senators.
Thank you, Senator Munia. Senator Kelly Marsh Titto.
Sijous Mossi, Mr. Chair. And I really appreciate the questions that have been asked and the thoughtful answers. And some of what I was getting at with the concern about the entry. And so, you know, even realizing that some of these are maybe former. And so, you know, even realizing that some of these are maybe former officers and and so forth, I'm thinking it might be worth considering, but I do want to look at the rules and regulations that are already in process or already in place, I mean, for the Department of Agriculture, and continue to think this through and do more research. But I'm thinking that for a volunteer program, it might be best in law to put some parameters on it for that, for the entry. People here, everybody here has really good intentions and they have the experience in the background, but, you know, when it's in law, it sets it up for the years to come, when we may not be in these positions. And so I I'd like just, at least myself, but maybe the rest of us, to just think about whether it should be as the Deputy Director of the Department of Agriculture was saying that we we just keep it at that, the entry and some of the other points, that those are not in the volunteers' hands. And just make at least maybe that part clear in the in the rules and regulations. I really want to expand the the human power, the people power that are out there to help, but I also really, really, really want to safeguard them. And people do, they get so emotional about pets. And we've seen just various incidences in the news and so forth about what can happen on other people's property or around their property. So if we could all just think about that really, really closely, to just think about whether we want to have that restriction in place, but to support the other parts that get them there. Because if there are the eyes and ears, then we've already increased it, it seems, greatly. And then we have the few, the police, the volunteer police, the reservists, the K A officers, you know, people who who are by law allowed to to do some of that entry, maybe if we just leave that up to them. And, you know, I'm glad the question was asked about the facility, because I'm trying to to think, how do we make sure it it all happens? Because we want it to all happen, right? To make sure that the facility's there, that we haven't created a situation and then the facility's not there and Gain is really struggling to to do this. So, yeah, if if we can all keep that in mind as we go forward with the the budget, or, you know, I don't want to be, I don't, I don't necessarily want to say that it has to be part of this bill, because that may take it outside of its intent and muddy it and, you know, all sorts of things like that. But it seems like it really makes sense that it needs to be connected with the facility to actually make this happen. So I don't know if anybody wanted to weigh in on that. I think I was going to ask you, Cyrus, if in your research with these stateside entities, are they often arming the volunteers with the ability to enter the premises? If you could speak on that a little bit, just so that we see what's working and and maybe its success or how they've gotten past challenges elsewhere.
There, you're touching upon, I think, the the crux of the issue. I think many people's concerns with with legislation like this is is just the wanting to know that the that there are processes, training, and regulations in place to prevent abuse. And we completely support that. But the reason these types of laws and these types of volunteer programs are set up many places around the country is to prevent, you know, people going on private property when when these these services are not being provided. And so right now, people are going on the private property because animals, when animals are in distress, it's very rarely on public property or in easements. I can think, one example that comes to mind is is a phone call that we got on a weekend, on a Saturday, of an animal with a coat hanger tied around its neck and tied to a tree. No food, no water. They called G P D. G P D says they don't respond to those things. I mean, in this, we know that G P D does the best they can, but when they're overtaxed, they're not going to be able to come out immediately. And so, and frankly, it's, we shouldn't have to rely on G P D officers to to respond to something that's very simple, going on to somebody's private property. In this case, it was an abandoned house, and being able to simply pick up a dog. We shouldn't have to rely on G P D doing that. But legally, it wasn't, you know, the people calling us were worried about going on to somebody's private property. And so if we had a volunteer animal control officer program that had proper training saying that, don't kick in somebody's front door, you can't do that, but if an animal's in the front yard under these circumstances and you attempt to contact the person and the attempt to contact doesn't work, you can authorize, you're authorized to rescue the animal under A, B, and C conditions. That's the kind of thing that we would want the Department of Agriculture to be able to provide to their volunteers and be able to adjust it depending on the skill level of those volunteers. We have volunteers right now that are very skilled, that have gone into private properties, but they don't have the protections and they don't have the the, yeah, the regulatory protections to be able to to do that safely. And they certainly don't have the authority, whereas if they're a voluntary animal control officer, they'd be able to have identification that they can provide the public, handouts that they can provide the public, notifying them of their rights, and they'll be able to 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 help intervene with these low-level, non-confrontational cases. Obviously, if somebody's upset or somebody makes a threat, in that case, we'd want people to back off, call G P D, call animal control officers. But in our experience, the majority of these cases can be handled by simply knocking on somebody's front door, asking to, you know, to assist and being able to remove an animal that's been hit by a car but just just laying there. Or it's an abandoned house and for some reason, and the animal's tied up out front. And so it's 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 difficult to put into statute, because there's so many edge cases that will just kind of, you know, create this gray area or just kind of be cross the line, where if we were to put in statute that you can't go on to the property because of A, B, and C, then 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 they can't. It it's very difficult to predict all those different different edge cases, which is why we want full authority to be under the Department of Ag to be able to tell their their volunteers that, you know, if there's a gray area, contact the director, contact whoever oversees the program, and we'll be able to proceed from there.
Senator, if I may, I I totally agree with you. And like Senator Mary was was talking about, we live in in a in a in a very sensitive climate, and people's private property rights are sacrosanct. And let me just give you a way to look at this, or at least how the department feels that this is the way we would implement this program. So you're you're totally right and hit the nail on the head when you said that they would be more like our eyes and ears and be able to respond to a lot of things and see things that our four animal control officers just, you know, even if we stationed one in each sector of the island, we wouldn't have enough manpower to be able to see or hear all the things, right? So with that in mind, I I remember Chief Stone. Chief Stone had a volunteer firefighter program. And the thing that he shared with me when when we were talking initially about any kind of volunteer program with the government was, he put all this training in, he bought all this equipment, and then when it actually came time to fight the fire on a Saturday, he couldn't compel them to do it. And so you kind of, you kind of wasted all of that money and resources. And and in the end analysis, it it ended up costing more than it was worth. The juice wasn't worth the squeeze. And so in in talking with Cyrus, we also had this conversation prior. And one of the things that that we thankfully ironed out was that we really want to make sure that these volunteers are not just, you know, whenever I feel like it. It's part of being in this program means that you're committed to it, right? That you're actually going to be able to be on a schedule. If you miss your your scheduling opportunities for a set amount of time, then you're no longer a part of this program. And so what that allows the department to do is now, because I only have four animal resource officers that I usually employ, you know, Monday through Friday, now I can spread them out so that I have an animal resource officer that's more available on more times during the day. Those that work with animals know that the best time to catch animals is before dawn, you know. Basically, during the daytime, you're not really going to be out there catching animals because the animals aren't there. They've retreated into the jungle, they go find food elsewhere. So knowing that and dealing with these natural cycles will allow me to be able to put my personnel where they can be most effective. And and so if I have volunteer animal control officers out responding to cases towards the morning, I can have, I can have a, an animal control officer, a person with the actual credentials, going out and actually addressing what was found in the morning, examples like that. So I totally hear you and and I agree with you that maybe it would be good if we put some kind of legal parameter within the law itself. But I leave that up to you, the senators. Just know that regardless of whatever you decide to do, the department and whoever are going to be our volunteers, we have a plan in place. But like, as you said, Senator, you know, that may be fine and dandy now, but we don't know what the future holds or or whether those, maybe there might be another animal rights group that might want to get in on it, or the directors change or things like that. So I I leave that up to your wise, wise decision on how you're going to do that. But know that whatever turns out, the department, at least right now, has a plan moving forward.
And if, sorry, if I could just add on that possible amendment under the the idea of changing mate be certified and trained to shell be certified and trained, as you brought up, I I think maybe we could put something specifically in there, that there should be a specific training, possibly by the A G's office, in regards to the risk, the personal risk and liability of going on to private property, which stages it should be done. And I would imagine that maybe even the Department of Agriculture should authorize different tiers of volunteers. And so your majority of volunteers are not allowed to go on to private property, but perhaps two or three volunteer A C Os would be allowed to go on to private property in a limited capacity. And that way, you have this tiered escalation method where you're still not having to rely on A C Os for all cases on private property, but you'd be able to at least have, you know, to be able to address the low-hanging fruit, the animal hit by a car but laying in somebody's front yard. And so I think maybe wiring that training.
I I appreciate that. I can see that the tiers would make a lot of sense and actually help with the volunteer program, because if people had to think that they might have to, maybe not kick down a door, but knock on a door and try to get into the house or something, maybe a lot of people wouldn't volunteer. But if they knew that they could be part of these tiers and they could do, you know, train up to the point that they feel comfortable, I think that could really expand the program in some ways. And so, like I said, I like the idea of the tiered approach, and maybe we would have that in law that, you know, none of this or only for that one tier does it ever get into entering someone's house. And maybe it's just the distinction between the proper legal term for land property and and like house, you know, to distinguish that we're we're giving them that authority to get on to somebody's land, but but not necessarily maybe into someone's house. So just something to think about. I think it's been really good discussion all around, and it's good to hear that there's been discussion between you all to try and be as thoughtful as possible. Ms. Maasim, Mr. Chair, for letting me ask that or have that discussion on that second concern.
Sure thing. Thank you, Senator Taitino. Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. A lot of the concerns I had and some of the comments I had have already been addressed in this discussion, particularly the private property. I too share some concerns. Just in light of, you know, the recent sort of climate out there, I think even though we're far removed from the continental United States, of course, because of social media, we see what's going on there, so there's a lot more talk about people protecting private property with guns because of looters. And I see the same talk happening on Guam and social media, even though we don't have any looters, per se, but a lot more people are talking about, I'm going to get a gun, I'm going to protect my property, and, you know, this and that, because they see what's happening in the state. So I think in that climate, we have to be very sensitive to that. So I do like the ideas we're brought today about maybe coming with tiers or something along those lines, and just as long as we're very careful with these volunteers. In addition to that, I do have a question about who who assumes liability if someone sues in some instance where a volunteer is involved for exigent circumstances or plain view not being met that they believe when their animal was impounded, or any sort of similar example. Who would assume the liability? Would it be the volunteer, Department of Agriculture, Gain? Does anyone have any idea?
We would, we would want the same sort of protections and and expectations that come with police reservists and the volunteer conservation officers, so that if they are working in the capacity of their role and following the regulations, then they won't be personally liable. But if they're to veer out and break the regulations, let's say, kick in somebody's door against the law, then then that's when personal liability comes into comes into account.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Also, is there anything about this program that could lead to sort of a raise in the in the cost of future contracts with Gain?
In, yes and no. I, the way that the program is laid out right now would not require to recruit volunteers and be able to provide the training. We think that that can be covered by our current contract. But if we're going to have a 24-hour phone line, response line, and it's not going to be manned by government personnel, or, I mean, ideally, 311 or something would be able to to be fully operational 24/7 and be able to handle animal control through that. But if that's not possible and we need volunteers or a third party to be able to handle the lines, which is done in many places, in many jurisdictions, especially large ones, the animal shelter will house animal control very closely with it. And so we would, we would recommend that, I mean, there absolutely, without a doubt, needs to be a 24-hour line. If government wants to hire those people 24/7, then it can. If it wants to outsource it, then it needs, we would want to, you know, we would expect to, you know, be given the funds if it's going to be us or a third party. But it will cost to have a 24-hour line.
Okay. Thank you. Senator Munia, would you, do you have any closing comments or questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And first of all, I want to thank Mr. Adrian Cruz for really working with us and and helping us to understand what some of the struggles that Department of Agriculture is having now in regards to this. And thank you so much for opening your doors and allowing that collaboration with with Gain and Cyrus and Ally. I think this is, this bill creates a twofold. First of all, one of the big cries is that there's there's just so much abuse going on outside, and we just need more enforcement. So I think that's one of the main issues, is that there just isn't enough enforcement for for people to protect animals or other people, animals that are being abused. And then the other one is the education, and I think that's the most important thing, is that there are some people who absolutely love pets. Pet ownership for most people, more than less, is like parenting. They become that parent of that animal. And for me, that's, that creates a huge passion for protecting other animals that they see. So their heart carries on to to the other animals that they see outside. Some people, I don't want to say a lot, but I know some people just don't know that they're literally abusing an animal. And I think that's part of the educational process, is that we're going to allow these volunteers to not just go in and beat down the doors, but to educate them and allow them to understand that what they're doing is against the law. And so that's really part of the the main focus on this bill, is allowing our volunteers who, who, if you take a look at all of the volunteers, what they do for nothing, they do this free and out of their, the kindness of their hearts, just speaks volumes of them and what they're they're capable of doing. Now, I understand that we need to stay, we need to keep them safe, but right now, there's nothing to keep them safe. It's open game. They're going out and doing things that they shouldn't be doing, and maybe they don't know that they And maybe they don't know that they shouldn't be doing it. So what this bill is going to do is it's going to allow them to be educated and create those barriers to keep them safe, even though they're still passionate about protecting our animal community. And, and again, our animal community is so large right now. And I can't even take my dog out for a walk without my dog being, you know, um, in, well, I don't, I don't want to say attacked because the, most of the strays out there are usually pretty calm, but it's scary to me. It's scary to me that I'm fearful for my dog's life and now mine because I see all these animals coming up to her and I'm trying to protect her. Um, and I will protect her, you know, whatever the cost may be, even against my life. Um, so I, I do feel like there's, there, there is a very big problem here. And all this bill is going to do is allow us to take one step closer to addressing the problem that everybody sees and they just turn their head on. Um, how many times do we drive on the road and we see an animal who's been, you know, injured or hit? And then most people want to stop and without risking their lives, you know, help that animal. But you can't do that in the middle of the highway. It's just difficult. So they will drive away with that whole, you know, that hurt in their heart, like I wish I could have done something. So now this opportunity is going to give people, you know, the opportunity to call Department of Agriculture or at least assist that animal with those rules and regulations in place. And for me, this is a very big thing for me because I am a very strong animal advocate. I love my dog. My dog gives me comfort. It is definitely therapy. And I think, um, with this time now, with this COVID, I think people have become closer to their animals because they're home more often. Uh, I think it's developed a, a love more for the animal community because of that. And so I thank again, um, Mr. Cruz and, and Cyrus and Ally for all of your, your support and I look forward to this coming into the floor. I, I definitely welcome the tier approach. I will work with the, the chair and the committee so we can, we can protect our, our volunteers as well. Thank you again, Mr. Chair.
Sorry. Let me unmute first. Thank you very much. You know, I'm not the one who put myself on mute. I think these guys are muting me. So. Thank you very much, Senator Munia. Um, and thank you to everyone for participating, uh, today. Uh, this will conclude our hearing on Bill 285-35. Uh, we're going to go ahead and take a short five-minute recess so we can reset for Bill 306-35. And of course, um, uh, thank you again to everyone for your participation. Thank you. Without any natural predators out in the wild, there's really nothing to keep their population down except for us. We are their only predator on this island. So there's nothing to keep their population down. And with that, their population has, uh, risen to levels that are unsafe. Um, by adding them to the unprotected species list, the community will be able to get involved in the removal of feral pigs more easily. And this concern can allow families to more easily feed their families and will also render Guam's neighborhoods safer. So, uh, with that, I'd like to also recognize, uh, my colleagues who are joining us this morning. Uh, Senator Kelly Marsh Taitino, good morning. Senator Luis Munia and Senator Mary Torres. Thank you again for, uh, staying with us this morning for the second half of this hearing. And I'd like to allow now, uh, Mr. Mike Uggan. Uh, since, uh, he's been waiting patiently, uh, all morning, I'd like to allow him the opportunity to begin, uh, providing his testimony. Uh, please, uh, unmute, uh, yourself as well as, um, uh, if you could, uh, begin by introducing yourself formally.
Okay. My name is Michael Uggan. I am the chairman for the Southern Guam Soil Water Conservation District Board. Uh, Buenas, de la Hafa de, Chairman Rigel and members of the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime Transportation, Power and Energy Utilities and Emergency Response. On behalf of the Southern Guam Soil Conservation District, we appreciate the opportunity to submit a letter of testimony and comments in support of Bill 306-35 in response to the proposed amendments to the Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations Relative to Lifting Restrictions Preventing the Control of Feral Pig Population and Restricting the Release of Pigs. The Guam Soil and Water Conservation Districts have been the lead organi- local organization committed to mitigating and addressing feral swine populations on Guam's agricultural lands. In 2016, the Guam SWCDs advocated through the National Association of Conservation Districts, Natural Resource Policy Group, that need to address the growing feral swine populations on Guam and throughout the nation. Through that advocacy, the feral swine was soon recognized as an invasive species nationwide. In that effort, the NACD and the USDA Natural Resource Conservation Services launched the first ever feral swine pilot program. By, uh, 2017, the district and USDA AFIS Wildlife Services entered into a working agreement to remove feral swine on Guam's private lands. Since then, both the Southern and Northern Districts have committed one-third of its budget every year as the local match to support the Guam Feral Swine Program. Today, the contribution has resulted in the removal of over 1,000 pigs with over 5,700 specialist hours funded and over 100 landowners serviced. One-third is a significant chunk of our budget, considering each district only receives on average a little over 60,000 every year. We are thankful Governor of Guam, Lulion Guerrero, helped allocate the local match on behalf of the districts for FY 2020 Feral Swine Program. We know the impacts of feral swine costs our farmers and our people way more than what we have invested. The damage to Guam's ecosystems and the environment is something we fear our children will have to live with in the future. Every day we hear the heartbreaking stories of our farmers who struggle and fall victim to feral swine activity. Feral swine continues to destroy our farmers' crops, damage our natural and cultural resources, spread diseases such as leptospirosis, Japanese encephalitis and other diseases. We recognize that more efforts are needed. Therefore, we feel Bill 305-36 is a step in the right direction. We wholeheartedly support this bill. In addition to our support, we recommend the committee with the Guam Department of Agriculture reviews the successes and outcomes of this legislation to assess whether or not the intend, intention of the, of bill, of this bill is in fact met. We hope that you will consider our recommendation. In closing, we'd like to thank you, Chairman Rigel and the committee for introducing this much needed legislation for Guam. We fully support the intention of Bill 306-35, which is to involve the community in helping control and manage the feral swine populations on Guam. Since it was my seat.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Uggan for your testimony. Uh, now I'd like to go to, uh, Mr. Adrian Cruz, Deputy Director of the Department of Agriculture. Cruz?
Buenos dias, senadores, guajos y Adrian Cruz. It's an entity, um, it's an entity director, este en el departamento. Um, you know, this, the feral, the feral pig problem is, uh, a very big problem. It, it touches on one of the most fundamental things that we on Guam have recently, as of this COVID, um, experience have made us ponder, and that is the issue of food security. The amount of crops that are lost to feral pigs is, it's our, it's our number one nuisance, uh, as far as, um, how we're dealing with it and the problems that farmers face. We always get calls on, on, on farmers, uh, exacerbated on, uh, uh, what are they going to do, uh, with these animals? It's on their private property. There's issues with, with going, being able to, we couldn't make enough traps to, to catch all, uh, the pigs. And, uh, Mr. Uggan knows, he, he himself is a farmer. Um, I'm, I'm sure he feels the pain when, when the, when the, when the pigs come and destroy, uh, his hard-earned crop. Uh, and we have dealt with, uh, our ADS section, our Agricultural Development Services, uh, and, and Mr. Uggan has dealt with Mr. Borja many times in trying to, uh, figure out a, a way to, to do this. Um, on a personal level even, let, let me just give you an example. I have a cousin who lives in a, um, urbanized area that is surrounded by sort of a jungly area. And my cousin died because, because a feral pig had run out into the road and, uh, he, he hit his ATV. Um, this is a real issue with, uh, safety, safety and food security. Um, the other issue is the fact that pigs are very similar to humans. And so, uh, zoonal, uh, uh, zoonotic diseases could also become an issue should that ever, should that ever happen. And their close proximity, uh, to, uh, civilization makes it all the more, uh, dangerous. And so the Department of Agriculture in consultation with DAR, the Division of Aquatic and Wildlife, um, and also our Farmer Development Services fully supports this bill. Um, it is a step in the right direction. As you know, during this COVID time, we even had a pig derby and, and, uh, in consultation with Mr. Uggan, I think we need to, we need to expand that and have that multiple times a year. It's, it's done great to try to decrease the population, but it's also helped us to help those families who really needed, um, um, some help um, with, with managing their food security. So thank you, Senator Rigel, for, uh, being able to, uh, help us in, in mitigating this problem. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a problem that not only affects farmers, but it's also just the general safety of our community. Uh, uh, feral pigs can be dangerous, even deadly. Um, and so, uh, we thank. Um and so uh we thank you for taking the leadership on that and we thank all the senators for realizing the problem and and helping us to solve um this. As you know, the department is small, uh the department is shorthanded. And so anything that we can get in in to be creative, to be able to figure out uh problems that affect all of us is greatly appreciated and we thank you for your leadership on that.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, thank you. All right, now I'd like to allow for my colleagues to ask some questions. We'll do the same way we did uh with with the first bill, we'll have two rounds, uh one question each round. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, you're recognized.
Situs Massey, Mr. Chair, and again, it's very helpful to hear the testimony for people who work the land and for people who have had other experiences or it's their their duties to to oversee issues like this. And very important issues were brought up about safety. I know both the author of the bill and myself, we know the same family um that was, somebody was attacked by a pig while trying to feed his dogs and and got ninety-one stitches. It was a huge ordeal and I'm a bit of a hiker and I know it's one of the things that we worry about is if you run into um a pig, what what is gonna happen? And with safety as well, um when I was studying for the Rip Current and Hiking Safety Bill and trying to figure out how we're going to make the island safer for our youth and visitors and others. Part of what we were researching and talked about was the leptospirosis in our rivers and and a lot of that is due to uh pig urine and other things getting into the water. So I think in multiple ways, people may not realize how this is really about safety as well. And the food security that was mentioned, the bill is thoughtful in its legislative intent. It also mentions that this erosion that the pigs cause causes it to get into the ocean, it it suffocates our reefs. And then that's the other part of of food sustainability or security is our fishing and our dependence on it. So in many, many ways, it's really tied together. So the question that I have is is really just wanting to make sure that we're taking into consideration possible uh safety issues for for hikers and and others, people living around their residents. So with that, it's uh got two parts to it is um one, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if I've heard that it's ever, that people ever use fire as a strategy, like we're not promoting it, uh we hear about it for deer hunting. And I I think it uh in everybody's official stance is that the fire should not be used. But whether it's used for pig hunting, because we want to make sure that uh we're discouraging it as much as possible. It causes way too much damage, it costs the government so much money to to try to to keep it from damaging and and endangering people. But also a a consideration is again, as a hiker, I wear a lot of bright orange and I get a little bit more nervous during hunting season. So if um the Department of Agriculture or Mr. Uggan could speak to those concerns about whether fire is used and whether there's some concern at all for hikers, um if there're gonna be hunters out there more often.
Senator Titino, I could actually address the fire issue. Fire is primarily used for deer hunting and the purpose of that is the deer like to eat the young shoots of grass that come up in addition to clearing the area, but the pigs don't eat uh young shoots of grass. Pigs eat uh root crops and other crops uh or or fruit that's fallen. So pig don't really eat the young shoots of blades of grass, so it's not really used for them. In addition to that, um hmm, not a lot of local hunters actually hunt wild pigs. Most local hunters prefer to hunt uh wild deer and that's a lot of it, it has to do with the preparation process um for wild pigs. It's a little more difficult to um prepare and get the gaminess out. I'm not saying no local hunters do, I'm just saying the majority of hunting is done for wild deer versus wild pigs. Some do on wild pig, but it's not as popular as wild deer. So I don't think the burning is really used uh for that. And hunters I've spoken to feel the same way, at least the hunters I know and who I've spoken to. So Mr. Cruz, if you have anything to add to that and Mr. Uggan, please do.
Sure, um you you're correct, Senator. The the practice of burning is typically associated with um deer. Because of course, if you if you burn the forest and it kills the fruit trees, um the the pigs will go away. Uh that that's their primary uh food source. Um, the second was about uh the firearms. Um, as I read the bill, um all the current um uh restrictions and and uh protocols for discharging firearms uh are still in place. So for example, you couldn't um shoot a deer around your house if your house was uh closer, it was within a hundred and fifty feet of a neighbor's house. So that would stay. Um and of course, all the the normal uh applications of the law as far as discharging your firearms in the jungle uh still apply. Um, the other thing is that what this law does uh do is allow people to be able to hunt on government land. So right now, uh people can get what's called pig depredation permits. So a private landowner could allow, a private farmer, for example, could allow a hunter to come and and eradicate swine on his property. But that person, because the the pig is is not on the unlisted category for the government, that person could not go on Gov Guam land. And as we know, um a lot of the jungle area, particularly around urban areas, is Gov Guam land. And so again, this becomes a safety issue for our community. And in order to address this, um Senator Rigel has has decided to put this on the unlisted um section and therefore now hunters will be able to go on that government land to be able to rid us of of this uh nuisance.
Situs Massey for those answers, um I guess part of why I'm, well, I, you know, like the the other beer we hear this morning is we we just wanna dot our i's and cross our t's. And so the information is very helpful. I too hadn't heard about it, burning for pigs, but I just wanted to make sure, so that's good to know. And but um when I served in grand jury, one of, I think it was the first case that we did was uh uh somebody who had been shot and killed by a hunter. So I don't remember what happened to that situation. And so I I just want us to be able to consider that as much as possible 'cause we we're seeing there's a whole lot of hiking going on, it's grown as a tradition. I know the author of this bill has spoken on that very specifically. And we want to make sure that our our hikers out there are safe. So uh yeah, I wanted to make sure that we talked about that a bit. And Situs Massey, uh Mr. Chair, for letting me ask these questions. I'm gonna have to dash off to a meeting, but thank you very much for the bill and and for letting me ask the question.
Thank you, Senator Titino. Senator Torres?
The concerns that I had um were actually um asked already by Senator Marsh Titino. But I I was, you know, the initial reaction I had when I saw the title of the bill was that we were gonna create an unsafe situation where discharge of firearms in residential areas was gonna be prevalent. I mean, that's the, you know, the immediate um thought that I had about firearms generally. But I I can see in looking at the bill and in listening to you, Mr. Uggan and Mr. Cruz, what we're trying to address specifically and how this can actually help with that. You know, uh like anybody else, I'm, we, in our, in our backyards, in our um urban areas, wild pigs have, they've just come right into our area. The other night, for example, my daughter was jogging and she heard a rustling and stopped and then it proceeded with running of these pigs. It it's incredible how they're just, they're literally at your doorstep. And so I I get what you're trying to do and I think that as with with everything else, even with the prior bill that had to do with animal control, anytime you're dealing with trespass on property or um firearms in particular, you know, that's where I think those gray areas um have to be addressed. But I I really appreciate um Mr. Uggan and and Mr. Cruz, your dialogues here because that that was kind of my speculation about this program. But I can see it is just a pro, it it's a permit, a revocable permit. So it 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 can work and um I think what I need to do is if maybe on the side, just speak with you further to fully grasp what the the topic is. You know, what what exactly we're doing and and how this will mitigate it, but yeah.
I can explain a a little bit if I can about the the uh firing of uh weapons of guns. So it does nothing to change the, there are already laws uh in place about where you can discharge a firearm for hunting purposes or otherwise. I don't remember offhand of the top of my head, but there's, there are already laws that say within so many yards of a of a residence, um within so many feet or whatever the exact measurement is. So the the current laws that are in place for that to prevent the firing of of firearms in residential areas remains. So in other words, this wouldn't allow people to just go shoot any uh pig in their backyard. If their neighbor is right next door to them and it's not within the the law to discharge their firearm, then they can't. So that's what it would allow them to do is set a trap in their backyard. So that way, you know, if they're too close to their neighbors, really this would only allow people to have like huge buffer zones, whatever the law is, and again, I forget the exact buffer zone. So if they're like on a private property that's far out in a ranch and you got the correct buffer zone where they're able to discharge a firearm, then they can shoot the pigs. But if they're like in a residential area, they can't just shoot the pigs in their backyard because their neighbors are too close and that's already in the law. And uh maybe that's also something we should do more to educate and make sure people understand that this bill doesn't mean Wild Wild West, go shoot any pig in your yard. So we'll do our part as well to educate people about it, 'cause I can definitely see where people would think, oh, great, now I can shoot any pig in my yard. No, no, that's not, you still have to follow the regular laws there. So we'll do our part to educate what the current laws are for that. So really, it would allow people who stay in a residential area to be able to trap a pig on their yard and set traps. So I hope that helps answer some of the uh questions and concerns. But please, uh Senator Torres, if you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, no, I feel, I think, I think the discussion was adequate. But I I think that that thing, that practical point you brought up needs to be honed in, 'cause a lot of people are are having that, that thought that now gonna be a shooting range in the backyard.
Very good point, yes, and I agree with you, we have to make sure that we're clear about this bill that you can't just shoot any pig in your backyard, you gotta make sure there's no house within. And I'll have to look up the exact um amount of yards, but I forget if it's a hundred yards or the the, I don't wanna quote what yo- what yardage it is, but there's a specific one in law that says you have to have so many yards between you and any other residents for you to be able to discharge your firearm. So I'll do my part on that and make sure we educate as much as possible about that. So Senator Torres, unless you have any other questions or comments? Thank you, Senator Munia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think that that's kind of a great segue to what my question is gonna be in regards to. So on page three and four of the bill, um in subsection eleven, one-one-three-two-zero and one-one-three-two-one, it it talks about the list of of animals for trapping and what the fees are. Um and so you listed um on both sections, deer, feral Asiatic water, uh which is the caribou, and feral pigs. And then on that, the subsection one-one-three-two-one also has the same list. And I know the intention really is to just eliminate the fee, but I'm wondering if scratching out that entire, that that's numbers, I mean, the letter C would actually be interpreted as now you can't trap them. So that's, I'm just wondering if if the intention really is just to reduce the fee to nothing, would it be okay to just put a zero or is scratching it out just eliminating them from allowing them to trap it? So that's, I was, that was just my concern.
Okay, that's a a valid question. I don't think so, but that's that's something I'll definitely look into and we'll have. Uh, I think we did get our legal review back, but I haven't had a chance to review the legal review yet. I have to double check. So I'll see uh what our legal says about that, if that uh renders it uh untrapable. But that's definitely a good point you brought up, 'cause that's not the intent. The intent is just to remove the fee so that we encourage people to trap pigs. 'Cause right now, you know, if someone wants to trap a pig legally on their property, they still have to go pay a fee, you know, five dollar fee and all, so the idea is to eliminate all that, so people can just trap pigs uh freely and not have to worry about them.
So that was my, yeah, 'cause I know that's not your intention, is to take the pigs off of the list uh of being trapped. Your, the intention is just to 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 re- remove the fee. So I didn't know if there's maybe other language that we can put in there. So rather than scratching that whole um, the feral pigs out, would just, could be interpreted as, okay, there, you know, you can't trap them now. So that's just a concern that I had. And then uh just as a final uh final thought of mine, you know, I guess maybe my my own personal yard is not favorable to to feral pigs, 'cause I I very rarely see many around my home. But um I I didn't realize how big of a problem it is. And uh just now listening to, you know, to Mike Uggan and and the direct uh Adrian Cruz talk about it, I realized how how serious it is and how serious it can be. There are some areas that I have gone running before where I've heard some rustling and ran faster, which in, that was kind of in my favor because my time to run became a lot shorter. But that's not the way we want to be in the, you know, in in the uh, in in our hikes or runs. So we don't wanna be fearful of that. So thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you for addressing this issue and to to Mike and and Adrian for participating. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Munia. So uh uh Mr. Cruz and Mr. Uggan, is there anything else you, either of you would like to add?
No, well, I'm just, I'm just glad that you guys are working on this thing here. It it's, it's been a long time coming, actually, you know, because this feral swine problem uh wasn't always here, although there was a lot of uh wild pigs running around in the past. But because uh back then, the hunting regulations and all that weren't the same as they are now, I truly believe, 'cause I was a part of that, even though I was a kid, we did, we caught lots, a whole bunch of them during our youth times. And uh and I think that had a a an impact as far as uh keeping them under control. And one thing here on your, on your bill there about releasing domesticated or other uh feral swine that were trapped and then released, a good uh, something I wanna bring up, something I experienced way back in the seventies. After Typhoon Pamela, a lot of wa- uh domestic pigs were, broke out of their 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 pens and they literally went wild. And then over that year, the next year, uh year or two years like that, we started seeing a change in the breeding of wild pi- feral pigs out there. They were bigger, they had, you know, they had more colors of the domesticated ones, right? And they're, you know, they're just, and then they're, they just, that's when a big part, the population exploded again, was right the years after Typhoon Pamela, when a lot of these pigs were still running wild and they joined the wild, the feral pig uh population out there. So that just introduced a new uh round of fresh blood into their system. They got bigger. And uh so that was a another issue, I remember very well about that thing. So just to bring that up as a side thing, but yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Uggan. So yeah, and uh to that point, uh I've had discussions with uh John at the Department of Agriculture's uh ADS section, is that, is that correct, Mr. Cruz? Is that uh from the ADS section, I've discussed with him before about the wild and feral pig population, and it's exactly what Mr. Uggan is saying. There's a lot of domesticated pigs that were let loose, either from the storms, uh for example. And then um uh Mr. John, is it Uggan or John, sorry, John um?
Borja.
At ADS, Borja, I apologize. Mr. John Borja, ADS, at Department of Agriculture. He spoke to me and he said that uh, he believes that there was also a time when uh even in the nineties, where a bunch of uh farmers were starting to breed domesticated pigs in the hopes of a slaughterhouse opening up. But because a slaughterhouse never opened up, there's a lot of people with extra pigs and nowhere to really sell it. So he believes some of the pigs were just sort of uh let roam free. Let wander free. And then so they went out and then, as Mr. Uggan was saying, the domesticated pigs start breeding with the wild pigs and they made uh, they added to that stock and made them bigger, 'cause domesticated pigs tend to be heavier. They're bred to be, you know, fatter. They're bred to be, you know, fatter basically and more meaty, to have more meat for meat production. Those pigs started breeding with our wild pigs, and that's another reason we have a huge population problem here. And yeah, I know of people who've been injured personally from wild pigs. And just as recently as several months ago, sometime, I think last year, there was a story in the news about a guy who was bit by a pig in Tumuning, which I thought was pretty rare. I guess it was behind that... Where was it in Tumuning? It was kind of near some of those bars in Tumuning. I think that a caves bar or something somewhere behind there, in that area. Apparently, he was, he saw a pig, and he was trying to approach it or something and feed it or something, and he got bit. It was in the news. I can pull up the article. So, it's definitely something we need to address. So, I appreciate it, all of you, for your testimony today, and I appreciate my colleagues for your time today. That will essentially conclude the hearing on this measure. I will take a look at the bill to be sure that we address the issue of whether or not, whether or not we're going to be, whether or not crossing out that line, Senator Munia, whether that's affecting the correct thing that we want to affect. So, that's something I will take a look at as well. With that, the committee will continue to accept written statements on today's hearing within 10 business days from today, which may be mailed to my office at 238 Archbishop Flores Street, Suite 906 at the DNA Building in Hagatnia. You may also send your statements to us at sen.cridgell@teleguam.net. That's sen.cridgell@teleguam.net, or you can send it by fax to 475-4768. Thank you for all of your participation. This hearing is now adjourned. It is 10:55 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you.